Welcome to the June 13, 2023 City Council Meeting. Please stand for the invocation by Councilman Mristians, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you for this night. I want to thank you for all these people here that are here to serve these citizens, Lord, and then also our citizens that are here to join us tonight. Lord, I ask that you guide us with your wisdom, with your strength, and with your courage. And I ask that, at the end of all this, that we act righteously for you, Lord. I ask all these things in the name of your Son and our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's City Council agenda is divided into four sections: consent agenda, public hearing, public comment, and general business. The first section is the consent agenda. This section includes routine items, and all items may be approved by one vote. May I have a motion on the consent agenda? Yes.
I'd like to separate the minutes, because I was absent for a portion of the March meeting that's on there.
Okay.
And we can do the first two by consent, and then the second one. To vote on that.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I'll move items one and two on the consent agenda. Second.
Okay. Let's go ahead and vote on items one and two, please.
The motion passes seven zero.
Madam Mayor, I'll move option of item number three on the consent agenda.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Go ahead and vote on item.
I'll be abstaining from this, because I was absent for a portion of that.
Okay. Thank you. Good.
The motion passes six zero with one abstention.
All right. Thank you. Moving on. Next section is public hearings. This section includes all public hearings as required by law or as council may direct. Procedure is staff will make a presentation. Comments will then be solicited from the public. An individual speaker shall have three minutes to speak. If the speaker represents a group, the speaker shall have five minutes. A speaker representing a group shall identify that group at the beginning of his or her remarks, and a group may have only one spokesperson. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and locality of residence. Upon the conclusion of public comments, the public hearing will be closed, and the matter referred to council for deliberation. We will now move on to consideration of adopting a resolution approving the fiscal year 2024 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and Home Program. Staff will provide a brief summary of the requests. Ms. Melville-Walker.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor Feraldi, and members of council. You have received the draft copy of the Fiscal Year 2024 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Program. Tonight, you are conducting a public hearing to receive the public input and comments regarding the plan. The plan outlines the needs, goals, objectives for community development, including housing and non-housing goals, and the recommended projects. The financial resources for this action plan under the Community Development Block Grant is a total of $711,154. Under the Home Program, $470,880. The recommended projects in the annual action plan are the Jefferson Park improvements, which is a continuation of the prior-year project, the Tyree Anne and Pleasant Valley Gateway improvements, the coordinated homeless intake and access, the Boy Scouts of America Scout Reach Program that's conducted at the neighborhood centers. And under the Home Program, there were four projects for the development of affordable rental and homeownership housing units. I have received no written comments for tonight, and any comments received tonight at the public hearing will be incorporated into the final plan.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Any phone calls or emails?
There are none.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed. The matter rests with council. Any discussion?
Move for approval.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. Great. Go ahead and pass our vote, please. Oh, did you want to speak here first? I'm sorry.
Yes, again, myself and Councilman Taylor sit on the CDAC Committee with several citizens of Lynchburg. And it's so wonderful to have the citizens of those neighborhoods a part of the discussion, a part of where the funding goes. And I want to commend all those agencies that applied for the funding, from housing, housing resources, to rental assistance, to various other projects that really help those persons who are underserved and help to get into better housing, give those wraparound services, all the programs offer wraparound services that begin out of poverty. So I want to commend the agencies for working together and work with the homeless population in our community and those who need more permanent housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passes seven zero.
All right. Moving on. Consideration of adopting an ordinance approving the rezoning of certain parcels in the Tate Springs and Langhorne Road area for the expansion of the Centra Health Medical Campus. Staff will provide a brief summary of the requests. Ms. Rachel Freshheisen.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. The purpose of this petition is to rezone a number of properties in the Langhorne Road and Tate Springs Road area to establish an IN-2 Institutional District II for the Centra Health Medical Campus, which will allow the expansion of the institution and its accessory uses by right. The IN-2 district also allows uses permitted in the B5 General Business District. The subject properties include 19 tracts totaling approximately 100 acres. The properties are used by Centra Health and include Lynchburg General Hospital, the Cancer Center, Dawson Inn, and other properties that support Centra. If the rezoning is approved, the property will continue to be used for institutional uses and would allow for expansion without the need for conditional use permit approvals. Since we last spoke about this at your business item briefing on May 23, Centra provided this map to distinguish between the parcels that they are petitioning to be rezoned in blue and the other parcels they own in the area shown in red, which are not part of this rezoning petition. There are some proffers outlined in your packet that relate to this property, which is the former Holy Cross School site. Centra has been able to partner with an adjoining property owner, which is developing apartments on the property to the west, and they will be sharing access to alleviate traffic congestion at the intersection of Tate Springs and Langhorne Road. The traffic study has been updated to reflect this, and the proffers essentially commit Centra to implementing those recommendations in the study. This means that the proposed zoning of this particular parcel is IN-2C or Institutional II Conditional, and the remainder of the properties would not be subject to these conditions. Planning Commission recommended approval of this petition at their meeting on April 12th. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you very much. Councilman Mristians?
Does anybody have questions?
Well, I need to get through the hearing.
Okay.
Would the petitioner like to make a presentation? Is there a petitioner here?
While they're coming, I do need to make a new statement.
Okay.
So as this deals, this project before us deals with Centra Health. I am a member of a group, which is spouses of employees of Centra Health, and I can look at this objectively, fairly, and impartially.
Okay. Thank you.
So I also have a disclosure to make. I am a member of the Board of the Centra Foundation. As a member of that board, I can redo this with an unbiased opinion.
Okay.
I receive no benefit from the Board.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor Reed, and Vice Mayor Feraldi, and other members of council. My name is Hank Creasy. I'm a lawyer with Woods Rogers Van Devener Black. I practice here in Lynchburg at 828 Main Street, 19th floor. I'm pleased to be presenting tonight on behalf of Centra Health, our hospital system. Very important project for the modernization plan that I know you heard more about earlier today from Amy Carrier, the Chief Executive Officer of Centra Health. And I'll be focusing on the rezoning that will kickstart that project. Centra is modernizing where we care. You heard earlier today, this jumpstarts a half a billion dollar investment in the Lynchburg area, $400 million of which will be spent primarily in the midtown area of Lynchburg. So this is the medical arts district where we all know Lynchburg General Hospital is located, and many of the other services and facilities that Centra has are located in that area. This project will involve improving the Lynchburg General Hospital campus building with a five-story addition for a new emergency department, medical and surgical space, some vacant space to be developed later, as well as some utility infrastructure, some parking to support Lynchburg General Hospital. And with regard to the one parcel that is not presently owned by Centra, a new medical office building, which in and of itself is about $100 million project. Centra is seeking this zoning to give it the flexibility of avoiding the cumbersome CUP process. This council, I'm sure, is very familiar with that process and how when you're subject to that zoning, organizations like Centra have to get repeated approvals from council. This would avoid that necessity of getting repeated approvals, but on the other hand, Centra would still have city oversight. City planning has been very involved in this project. The Planning Commission, of course, recommended the adoption of IN-2 zoning and certain things like building permits and site plan reviews, erosion of soil control. These kinds of reviews will continue even after institutional zoning. We have a list of parcels that are included and excluded, and Rachel referred to those earlier. So the blue parcels shown on the map are the 19 parcels that Centra proposes for rezoning. All of these are owned by Centra Health or two of its affiliates, General Business Concerns or Centra Health Foundation, with the exception of parcel 15, which is the former Holy Cross site that is presently under contract and subject to a contingency for rezoning for Institutional II zoning. Institutional II zoning is consistent with the city's vision. I'm standing here almost exactly 10 years after having stood before council and proposed or commented on the institutional zoning ordinance that Jeff Huggelson, when you were president on council, you motioned for the adoption of the current zoning ordinance. Centra, along with many other institutions in the Lynchburg area that are very important to our area, participated over a period of three years to comment on a institutional zoning ordinance. This involved stakeholder meetings at the Planning Commission, in which Centra participated with its representatives, including myself, Liberty University, and others. And so we believe that this rezoning for Centra is very consistent with that. Indeed, Centra's campus, what we're talking about tonight, with the exception of parcel 15, which it is not known at the time, was presented at the time as a possible candidate for institutional zoning too. I would like to note, the Midtown Comprehensive Plan refers to this area as the Medical Arts District. It says it's designed to attract all services related to the medical field in hopes of creating a compact cluster of medical facilities to encourage a campus-type atmosphere. We know that that's what exists today, and this modernization plan that was presented earlier is just the next step towards entrenching the Medical Arts District of Lynchburg as the bedrock of our healthcare system in Lynchburg. This is the future land use map, and you'll see the blue area there on the future land use map as part of the 2030 Comprehensive Plan shows the LGH campus as proposed for institutional zoning. Shows some other parcels that are covered here as well in blue. A few of the parcels that we have listed are shown as mixed use. This is the map that shows the current zoning. Current zoning is either B1 limited business, B3 community business, R4, which is the Holy Cross site, or a couple parcels are R3 medium-density residential. This just demonstrates that the only other existing campus in the Lynchburg area that is IN-2 are really multiple, it's the Thomas Ford Baptist Church and Liberty University Campus. It was over 700 acres, zoned IN-2. There were dozens of parcels involved, and I just show this to demonstrate that there is some residential zoning that is associated with that or borders that IN-2 district. So institutional zoning under the ordinance doesn't require that it be exclusively within a business district, but primarily, and that is true of the Centra campus. These are some references to the current IN-2 zoning, but I would just like to emphasize that the city's long-term vision for this area is consistent with what we're requesting. It's consistent with what this council did 10 years ago. Healthcare is complex. The buildings that Centra has to manage, plan, build are very complex. Centra has the capability of doing that in-house. We have Roger Bradley here, who's been to, he's served other hospital campuses across the country. We're fortunate to have him here as this huge project is getting started. Centra is ideally suited to this flexibility, because it has an in-house architect, it has an in-house planning team, it has the expertise to deal with these things, and as a health system, it's also overseen by CMS, the Department of Health, the Joint Commission, and others. So in addition to dealing with city, the city's resources, it has that oversight as well. And Centra has a track record that shows that it's a good corporate citizen, and it does great things for us as a community. Centra supports Lynchburg. I want to note that Centra does pay about a half a million dollars in real estate tax a year to the city. Centra has an agreement with the city to tax several properties as though they were taxable when Centra is a 51(c)(3) charitable organization entitled to real estate tax exemption. But there is an agreement whereby Centra pays tax on Nationwide Drive and the Community Access Network. In addition, this new development of the former Holy Cross site is medical office building. This $100 million project will result in a taxable project. That will be a medical office building that will go onto the tax rolls for the city. I also want to emphasize the importance of maintaining this Medical Arts District for employment. Centra is one of our leading employers in this community. The medical office building alone will employ about 114 people, and that will continue to be very important to this area of the city. You've heard a lot earlier about the improvements, so I don't want to spend too much time going over the improvements. We know there's a new bed tower. We know there's some parking and infrastructure. We know there's the medical office building. These are very important new features for the campus that will help improve care for a long time to come. The concept plan here shows the development of the medical office building on parcel 15. I want to emphasize the joint entrance along Langhorne Road, which was a recommendation of the traffic consultant. These are the three traffic, final traffic report recommendations that Centra will adopt as part of the conditional zoning to IN-2C for parcel 15. Centra and Lynchburg can grow together. This is a very important kickstarting of these projects. This rezoning is essential to get shovels in the ground on time, and it's essential to getting to the next stage of healthcare infrastructure for the city. Thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. If we have any questions, we'll call you back.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition? Okay. Any emails or calls from citizens?
There are none.
Okay. Well, there's no need for rebuttal, then. The public hearing is now closed. The matter rests with council. Any questions? Vice Mayor Feraldi?
Move for approval? Second.
Okay. All right. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor, I apologize for interrupting. Just for a point of clarification, is the motion for approval including both ordinances that are in front of City Council? There are two. One that has the multiple properties, and then one that has ID property number 152125 Langhorne Road.
My intention was for both, unless we need to separate them, or unless someone in council wants to.
Is your second for both as well?
Yes.
Okay. For motion and second for both, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are a few organizations in town that I think would fall into this category, and Centra is certainly one of them. As Centra goes, so goes the city, and so goes the region. A $500 million investment, hundreds of jobs, and economic development to a T, or I guess E, I'm not sure, all to say, this is an impressive offering for one of the key stakeholders in our city and our region, as an employer, as an economic impact, not to mention the fact that they offer healthcare to our citizens, our neighbors, and our family members. So I am thrilled to get behind this. This is something that falls into the category of why I ran, is to get behind developments like this that bring this level of economic impact to the city. And so I look forward to the additional jobs that are brought here. I know there was one building that was cited for bringing at least 100. There are certainly hundreds of jobs that will be associated with this, let alone the lives that will be impacted. So ultimately, I'm thrilled to get behind this, and I would ask my colleagues to join me in supporting this incredible development.
Thank you. Dr. Wilder?
Yes, and I was also trying to make a statement as well prior to his motion, but I do serve on several boards that also receive some support from Centra, like CAN and Free Clinic Board, but I still can serve partially, because I don't receive any funding from that portion of them. But again, I second the motion, because I am so supportive of healthcare in our community to make sure we have the best healthcare system in Lynchburg, to make sure persons want to come here because of the lifestyle we have. And also, when you get to the stage where you need healthcare, or better healthcare, we want to make sure that the resources are here that you don't have to travel outside of our city. And to see them make improvements or expansions to the emergency room, which gets, I think, like one of the top ones in the state, I believe, for care. We see the expansions of the emergency room and various other locations that they're expanding planning to do. It's going to really benefit our community, give us better healthcare in our community, better resources, better access, so we have better access for our healthcare. Also, as one of our number one employers, we're thankful they continue to expand and make Lynchburg a better place. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion down here? No? Councilman Huggelson?
Thank you. You know, I think this does warrant discussion, as opposed to just, you know, kind of running things through. There's, as Mr. Creasy had mentioned earlier, I was instrumental in the beginning of the institutional zoning, because it's very critical that we have an institutional zoning. The one thing that I do have little problem with, and the entire plan, and maybe we can, you know, dissect this ordinance into, since it is in two codified, uncodified ordinances, where we can divide the question as presented. What we have is, the institutional zoning was typically for institutions that are kind of by themselves, as opposed to institutions that grow up in a neighborhood. Now, I can definitely appreciate the fact of you are able to minimize all the CUPs for each project and whatnot. Fantastic. Great. Minimizing any regulation, fantastic. The modernization, fantastic. Investing, great. Having more jobs, wonderful. Everything is fantastic. Just the one thing that what, when we go from an institutional, or from a R3 or a B1 to an IN-2, there is now no more public discourse. You'll still have the input from city staff with regarding the building and the water runoff and whatnot, but it completely eliminates the ability for a citizen to say, eh, this is my neighborhood. You know, I grew up in this house, and this is, now you're going to turn into a parking lot in my backyard, and those kind of things. And we still may do that, because it could be a very good argument at that time. It could say, you know, it's a higher use, because it's your property, and you can actually build this parking garage, and at that time, it makes sense. If we do this today, what it's doing, and I appreciate that you had good neighborhood discussion, and you talked with some neighbors and removed some, maybe you can come up and address that, if you could. Yeah. Because there was some things, I know what at first blushed when I saw it. There were like parking lots in the backs of people's, you know, residence. And I think as I was reading this, my packet didn't come through as clear, because my iPad's not working, and I had to try to, I can't scroll through the things as easy, but it looked like you had some neighborhood meetings. Those neighborhood meetings from that you took away to say, we're not going to do this in this neighborhood, because the neighborhood was dead-set against it. Help me with that one.
So if you look at the map, there are a number of parcels in red. The smallest parcels there are shown on Hillsdale and Overbrook. That is the Tate Springs Farm Neighborhood, which actually, predecessor to Centra Health, developed. So that's a residential neighborhood, and those lots shown are owned by Centra Health, as well as the York Street Address, which is labeled A. It's the larger lot behind those. That's not part of that neighborhood. Centra had proposed, or spoke to the neighbors about potentially building a surface parking lot there. It would be an ideal location because of saving, you know, it's not as expensive. It would have preserved what is the Tate Springs Medical Office that will be taken down for the proposed parking on parcel nine. But neighbors did object. Centra had proposed to do things like add some entrance improvements there, do other things. There were several neighborhood meetings. Centra decided to abandon that plan. An alternative to that site would be a parking deck. Parking decks are very expensive. Centra would rather spend those dollars on healthcare infrastructure, and they're not all that nice to look at either. So Centra has a plan, but it's very dependent on being able to develop this medical office building on the former Holy Cross site, because that, putting the medical office building there, if the parking goes on parcel nine, that medical office building can't go there. So it's got to go somewhere else. So that's the rationale for acquiring new property for the medical office building, moving the parking over, and not touching any of the residential lots at Hillsdale or Overbrook. And so they will be left exactly where they stand today.
So 15 is the new one where the parking lot will be. That's the old Holy Cross.
That's where the medical office building will be. It does have parking spaces.
Now, so where did the parking get moved from the neighborhood?
If you look at parcel nine, this is.
It's hard to find all your parcels on your map, but I'm following. There it is, right there. Okay.
Yeah.
And that is where all those, that's like basically.
That's 1900 Tate Springs Road.
That's like a strip mall now that's kind of closed down mostly?
Well, it's looks, it's an older medical office, you know, single-story structure that will be removed, and parking will be placed there. So that will be, so all, once this project is complete, the parking directly in front of Lynchburg General Hospital will be for us, for patients. And staff parking across from parcel nine, which is shown as 4A and 4B, that will be some new staff parking there.
Okay.
So it'll shift, it'll shift parking in that direction away from Hillsdale and Overbrook.
So any other neighbors, you know, I guess where you're adjacent to, or it looks like most of the property, there is one property that's owned by somebody other than Centra in here.
That's the Centra Health Foundation.
Okay.
And parcel seven, that's the farthest, sort of the farthest lot away that's part of the campus. That parcel is not slated to be developed. It's in, but if it were to be developed, at the Planning Commission, we had, we did have one community resident that asked about that, didn't object, but asked about what might happen with that parcel. No current plans, but if there were, if there was a vision for that, that it could possibly be parking in the future.
And so the vision and the inference behind the institutional zoning was to zone the property that's owned by the institution in a fashion that they can actually do kind of what they want with it, you know, obviously per building codes and whatnot, but do what they want with it until it affects others, you know, outside the property. So as this new iteration, do you see this, any negative pitfalls of how it could possibly affect others outside of this property?
Well, this, this plan, in my view, adopts zoning that's consistent with the uses in this area. So if you go to the Medical Arts District, we all know, you know, if you've taken a child to the emergency room, or you go to visit a physician, or what have you, it is a campus setting now. And there was a lot of discussion 10 years ago about the fact that these parcels didn't have to be contiguous. Most of these parcels would qualify as contiguous, you know, just because there's a public road there. We're. would qualify as contiguous, you know, just because there's a public road there. With the, you know, Parcel 15 is the one that's farthest away, but that is going to become a key part of the Centra Midtown campus. So we, at Planning Commission, where we got support, we didn't have any objections from the neighbors. We've had dozens of billboards on these parcels and haven't gotten any objections. So while you could conceive of an objection or an impact, I think it's very consistent with the current use of the property.
So what kind of negative impact could you conceive?
I don't conceive of any negative impacts, but neighbors, you know, when there's a change, we don't like, humans don't like change. And so neighbors, you know, might hesitate about a change. But that's true of virtually all the change that we're faced with. On the other hand, you know, there, as a patient in this community, I was served by Centra Health during the pandemic, went to this hospital facility, and, you know, one of the things I look forward to is new medical facilities.
So with this, changing the zoning as it is, it basically moves everything, so even if it's a B1, it moves it the equivalent to a B5, correct?
That's right.
And so with that, so we're basically carte blanche, saying everything within this footprint, everything on all these, all these properties can be the maximum intensive use, right?
So institutional zoning permits continued uses, current uses, things that required a conditional use permit would no longer be required, and it would allow expansions for B5 uses. Certain uses would require coming back to council for a CUP, or might require a traffic study, you know, or a concept plan for an arena or auditorium, or, you know, a traffic study if there's a new, new entrance to a city street.
Okay. Thank you. Rachel, did you present this? Was that Rachel? Okay. Now with a B5, like for example, if we're a B5 next to a residential, so is there height limits with regarding businesses in a B5?
There are. The IN2 district specifically does not, or it specifically exempts IN2 from the height limitations. I think Centra has strategically chosen which parcels to exclude, to try to be considerate to those neighbors. And I think Mr. Creasy is correct that the uses that are there now are going to continue.
So where is, where would the, the IN2 that has no height restriction, where are those now, so they're intentionally restricted via proffer? Or how are they, how did you say they're intentionally restricted?
Oh, no, sorry. The IN2 district, in our zoning ordinance, as, as adopted by council, it excludes IN2 from being subject to our height ordinance.
But in here, you said they specifically were concerned about the neighbors and didn't want to have those projects or those buildings there. But if it's an IN2 where there's no ability to control any level of height, and you got a, you know, one-story residence, and right next to it is now becomes a B5, or an IN2 that can go as high as it wants, so you got a house and a skyscraper, could that happen next door to one another with this? Or is there places that were intentionally said, hey, we're going to remove that as a condition?
What I was referring to is parcels, I think it's, it's, they're lettered, not numbered, NO and P. Those are the parcels that would seemingly be most affected by what you're referring to, if Centra were to build up. Centra specifically has not chosen to rezone those, so that they are not directly adjacent to the IN2.
So the red on here is not the second ordinance? The red here is, the red is not being addressed?
Red is not on the table. The second ordinance only applies to the Holy Cross site, where the proffers about traffic come into play.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, which is, that's good to know. As I saw this, I thought the red was...
Red, red are parcels that we're, that Centra does own, but Centra is not requesting rezoning for.
So all these A through R?
Everything you see there retains its existing zoning classification, which is residential.
Perfect. Well, that's, that's a whole lot better. So now those are, so now with some of these properties, if we do the IN, you know, the IN2, and are there any places that you would foresee problems, that Centra would build a skyscraper next to a small office building, or a small dentist, or a...
So for example, if you take Thompson Drive, Parcel S is owned by Centra, which is administrative offices, but that is excluded from the rezoning. And the reason Centra did exclude that was because of the notion that that crept away from, you know, the heart of the, of the campus there. And so that preserves that area of Thompson Drive as of, you know, medical offices is what typically is down there. And then also, I would point out that next to Parcel 15, there's...
Next to where?
Next to Parcel 15, the Holy Cross site, where the medical office building is going to go, there'll be a, there's proposed development for apartment buildings there, rather than a single-family. It's R4, and that would have a joint entrance with the central property. So those would be compatible uses. So really, the only residential that we're talking about has been excluded, and that will result, all those properties that Centra owns, basically will serve as a buffer there, those parcels in red.
Okay. Now, are there any plans? What are the, with regarding the plans as far as the heights? I know there's towers and...
So for Lynchburg General Hospital, that is planned to be five stories tall.
Okay.
The medical office building, five, is also five stories, yes.
Because, you know, again, I've been around a long time, and I've seen what's happened when we don't try to protect the neighborhood. And we've seen where single-family homes and next to it was proposed five stories, right next to it, that used to be an R1. That was, you know, so I'm a little cautious, because I like to try to make sure that we think these things through, and protect the neighbors as much as possible.
Well, if it's any consolation, the expense of this project goes to show you how expensive it is just to get to five stories in a medical, you know, in a hospital building. So there's, there's some practical limitations to how tall it would be. And I think this height is consistent with what you see now at Lynchburg General.
Now, one other thing, just might as well throw this out there, since you brought it up. You said there are certain properties that Centra has entered into a taxable agreement with the city. Another thing we do here is we look out, protect the neighborhoods. We also try to protect the neighbors' pocketbooks. And I know Centra has, most of the property is tax exempt. You mentioned that there's some other projects, that the Holy Cross site will be a taxable property. You mentioned about the Nationwide Drive and the Community Access Network would also be a taxable property. Are there any other properties that you would, Centra would consider helping out our local taxpayers on, or is that...
I don't have any authority to speak to that.
Yeah. Thank you.
还有什么问题?
So a lot of my questions have been answered, and actually, a lot of my concerns have been alleviated through this, particularly these A through M and NOP parcels, if you don't mind staying up here.
I'm sorry.
I got a couple of questions for you, and then probably Rachel as well. I'm looking specifically now at Parcell 16 and 7. Those are the only two left that really concern me. And that is going to be 100 Morgan Street and 50 Page Street. So when I'm looking right here in the parcel viewer, at 100 Morgan Street, we're looking at what was previously B1, now going to IN2, right next to a single-family house, like literally right on top of it. 106 Morgan Street. Did we, Rachel, did we get any feedback from anybody over there on those parcels?
So I don't remember where exactly the gentleman at Planning Commission lived.
He, he's, he requested, he asked about Parcel 7. Parcel 7 is owned by the foundation, and that is an undeveloped parcel. Parcel 6 is currently parking.
16, 16.
I'm sorry. Parcel 16, let's see.
That's 106 Morgan Street. Excuse me. 100 Morgan Street, 100 Morgan Street.
That's also parking.
What is, is there, what is the plan for that right now? It's going to remain parking?
Yep.
Because that's kind of my concern there, is giving you guys the authority to build a, you know, B5 complex right on top of somebody's house. And then what's the plan for Parcel 7?
There isn't a plan right now for Parcel 7. Parcel 7 is a difficult property from a topographical perspective, but if it were to be developed, it would be developed as parking.
It would be developed as parking?
Yeah.
I'm looking at for onsite detention if it needed water. So it's not even for parking, it's onsite detention for water.
Okay.
Stormwater.
Forgive me. Onsite detention for water.
Even better. All my concerns have been addressed.
All right. Well, I say we vote on it. Thank you very much.
Is this being divided the way it was in our packet? I think there are two ordinances.
Right. The motion was to vote on both ordinances together.
So maybe then the city attorney can address, why were they separated, and help me understand the two? Hard for me to see this on my...
Probably because one was dealing with conditions versus the other was not, it looks like. The main difference in the two ordinances certainly, I'll defer to Rachel here, but it looks like it was for rezoning for Institutional District Number 2, and then the other one was including conditional, and there's some proffers in there.
The proffers on Parcel 15 relate to the traffic study, the recommendation for a turn lane and a taper. Those proffers essentially say Centra will build that.
Thank you.
All right. So let's go ahead and vote. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item number six, consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds and introducing a resolution appropriating funds from the Virginia Drinking Water State Revolving Fund for the lead, sorry, for the lead and copper service line inventory project.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm Jim Tally in Department of Water Resources, and this public hearing is to address the acceptance of a loan and grant program from the Virginia Department of Health to support the city's lead water service inventory, water service line inventory, and the city's lead water service line replace, replacement program. The amount of the loan is to be set at a maximum of $600,000, and the amount of the grant is fixed at $190,000. The city's lead water service line inventory and water service line replacement programs are the result of an EPA rules promulgated in December of 2021, roughly a year and a half ago. These rules require all community water systems in the nation to conduct an inventory of their water service lines and inform citizens about the nature of the materials in those water service lines. That inventory is to be delivered by October of 2024, which is roughly 16 months from now. In addition, these rules require all community water systems in the nation to develop a plan to replace any lead water service lines, and also to replace any galvanized water service lines, which may have been contaminated by lead due to their adjacency to lead, either presently or in the past. For the past several decades, this Department of Water Resources has had a very robust digital mapping of all of our water mains, and we've used that extensively over the, over the years. But we have never gone down the path of addressing mapping and inventorying each of the 22,000, approximately, water service lines that take the water from those mains to our individual citizens and customers. So in order to minimize the financial impact of this huge endeavor, we applied for this grant and loan from VDH, and feel fortunate to have been awarded these amounts. And I and other staff will be ready to answer questions after the public hearing.
Thank you very much. Mr. Tally, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in opposition? Any emails or phone calls?
There are none.
Okay. While the public hearing is now closed, the matter rests with council. Do you have a motion on the resolutions?
I have a quick question for...
Yes? Councilman Huggins?
Jim is coming back up. So the, the fiscal impact here, it says the debt service associated with the new revenue issue bonds. Walk me through, so we understand the lead in the, in the pipes. So where does the fiscal impact come from? You mentioned there were grants.
Repaying the loans, basically.
Okay. So, so the amount that can be done, though, what you're looking at is the revenue bonds not to exceed 600,000, oh, and the principal payment. So you're looking at about almost 800,000, or 600,000 in principal payment, and then there's going to be interest?
Yeah, interest, I believe, is 1%, yes.
Okay. And so with this, so the, this comes out after you decipher how many lines have got to be replaced?
Yes. It's, it's a very complex thing. We, we first have to conduct an inventory. After we conduct an inventory, depending on what the inventory reveals, we will then have to enter a testing program. And then depending on what the testing program reveals, we will have to enter into a program of replacement. And it is, right now, we, we don't know what our materials are. We have been working on this inventory for approximately a year now, and we are starting to get preliminary results in, but it's still too soon for me to say, based on the quality of the level of it we have now, to know how many lead service lines we have. So it's very difficult to predict what this may ultimately end up costing.
And so with that, when we're looking at voting for something that costs something, we usually know what the number is before we vote for it, and here we're not.
Correct.
Is there, is there a reason that this is so far ahead of the results from the survey of the lead lines?
Well, this, these particular funds are really addressing the inventory process, the gathering of the information. And we have a contract with a consultant right now that's very much in line with the amount of these funds to conduct the inventory. But again, what that inventory will result in, that you're not really voting on tonight. We don't know what that is yet, and I'm sure we will be back here at some future date to talk about the results of that inventory.
So once that comes up, because then we're going to have to, I mean, if there's a lot of inventory, there's only so much we can do.
Yes. And then the regulations do not, the requirement to submit a plan by October of next year is not a requirement to replace all the lines by October of next year, but it's to develop a plan to know what we're going to do based on what we have learned about the inventory in the intervening 14 months.
And so the fiscal impact is not going to be for quite some time.
The bulk of it, correct, will not be in the next fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you.
This is as a result of EPA regulation, correct?
Correct.
So...
Yes.
What would be the liability if we didn't do it?
Maybe the city attorney can answer that.
If we're under EPA requirement, or is this related to the consent order?
No, this is not part of the CSO consent order. This is a separate requirement.
It's pursuant to EPA regulation, though.
It's pursuant to EPA regulation.
So I would anticipate we'd be subject to enforcement action.
I'm just curious, I'm just curious of what, what, you know, because just kind of like, if we're entering into something, we don't know what it's going to cost.
And, and it's also not totally driven by regulations. We also don't want our citizens drinking... We also don't want our citizens drinking lead tainted water either. I mean, that's the real goal here, is to not have our citizens doing that.
I get that, I'm just, I'm, I'm very curious about, I mean, the inventory, I think, is something that we should definitely look into, but I'm very curious about what's next? Because if it's a regulation requiring us to spend lots of money.
It, it could get to be that point. You know, right now, I'm reluctant to even quote any numbers as to how many lead service lines I think we're going to have. It could be in the hundreds, it could be in the thousands, it could be less than a hundred. It's, you know, all these lines are buried, we can't just go out there and look at them. So we're basically going back and looking at a hundred to a hundred and fifty years of handwritten records and transcribing them all into digital formats so that we can conduct a modern technical analysis on it. But the records are, there are multiple iterations of the records, multiple, some of them are in databases, and trying to reconcile them all so that you think you have an answer, but then you compare that answer to what a different database says, and then they don't agree, so you have to go reconcile them. So sometimes I've thought we've had as few as a few dozen, and then other times I've thought we've had thousands. It, it, it is constantly varying as we try to reconcile all this sometimes conflicting information. I will say I have been very impressed with the amount of information we have found. I originally was fearful that we would end up with thousands and thousands of unknowns, and EPA does require you to begin to address unknowns as if they are lead. But the number of unknowns has gone down drastically as we have discovered many more records than we thought we had, which is actually quite thrilling to know that people a hundred years ago were, were keeping really good records for us and has, is really going to pay dividends as far as keeping those number of unknowns at a minimum.
Councilman Taylor?
Can, can you tell about the water meters?
That is one of the options, that you can test the water, yes. I said, once we get the, no, not by the quantity, if you mean the quantity of water use, no.
The, the water meters that's installed outside the residence?
Right.
They, they've been replaced?
Generally, no, because typically when we install a water meter, we also install a few feet of copper pipe upstream and downstream. So if you look at the meter itself, you're gonna see copper pipe, even though that copper might, pipe might only go two feet and then turn into lead. So we have to actually, well, there are multiple methods by which we will assess this information. We have started with the paper records. We will also look at our ordinances and what our regulations required so that we can possibly set a date by which we can say any pipeline installed. After that date, we know is not lead because it was forbidden by either federal regulations or our standard, standards and specifications. We have not yet picked the date by which, where we will draw that line, and we have to get V D H's approval on where that line is in time. But that will also help eliminate a lot. Then after that, that's when you start to get into testing programs, and then some statistical analysis, which I have not yet fully learned to comprehend yet, how that's going to work. But there will be other methods so that we hopefully don't have to dig twenty-two thousand holes in front yards to make this determination. It, it shouldn't be that complicated, although it sometimes sounds that way.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hudson?
You had mentioned you'd want, so we do some testing on our water, right?
Oh, yes, yes. But we don't test every single household.
Every single household.
And you could have, you know, copper pipe here, copper pipe here, but the one in between is lead. And that's generally, they're sort of been discovered randomly.
And so citizens can test their water, or use filters or purifiers?
That is, that is one of the options, yes. Filters will be possibly part of the program. Again, we haven't really defined the program, cause we don't know the magnitude of the problem yet, but filters are definitely mentioned in the regulations. And testing citizens going into their own basements and looking at the pipe, and there will be information published for them to help them ascertain by looking at their pipes and taking photos and sending them to us.
So about what year did lead get no-go, you mentioned?
You know, I'm.
Seventies or the twenties?
I'm looking at nineteen seventy right now, but I'm not convinced enough to publicly say that will be the year we will request that the line be drawn. But yeah, that's, we have records of installations up through nineteen sixty-nine, and so far I haven't found any after nineteen seventy, but we're not done yet either.
Okay, thank you.
Move for approval?
Second.
Okay.
It's so crucial to have good, clean water, and whatever assistance support we need to do to our water system, make sure we don't wanna have a Flint situation, but to make sure we do what we can to make sure our water is adequate for our citizens, thank you.
Yeah, I don't know what to add to that, I just think we need to make sure that we have safe water for our citizens.
Madam Mayor, just again for clarification, does the motion include both the resolutions currently before city council?
Yes, of course.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion in a second?
I do.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just wondering if we shouldn't be suing the EPA to pay for this? That's, that's kinda what I'm wondering about. This is, if we have no idea what it's gonna cost us because of Joe Biden's regulations in Washington, D.C., that shouldn't be on the taxpayers of our city. Just where I'm at.
I don't think it's the current administration.
Bipartisan Infrastructure Act. Bipartisan Infrastructure Act, it says it right there.
Okay, again, I don't think.
Signed by Joe Biden.
All right, we're gonna call the vote. Go ahead and vote, please.
The motion passes, five two.
All right. Next section is public comment. During public comment, individual speakers have three minutes to speak, and those representing a group have five minutes to speak. Typically, city council takes comments, sorry, made during the public comment section of the agenda under advisement and may refer concern to the city manager for follow-up. Citizens often express conflicting and diverse positions regarding specific issues under consideration. To encourage citizen participation and to avoid intimidation to persons who may express sometimes unpopular opinions, applause, cheers, or jeers from the audience are not permitted. When appearing before city council, citizens may not engage in behavior that intimidates or insults others, engage in disruptive behavior, or use profanity or vulgar language, promote private business ventures, or campaign for office. We will now hear from a citizen regarding public safety and drug activities going on in the city, Mr. Brandon Jones. Please restate your name and locality of residence.
Brandon Jones, Lake River area. Yeah, good evening, city council. Have a couple of quotes to begin with. Number one is, inaction can sap the vigor of the mind, and it breeds doubt and fear. However, action breeds confidence and courage, by Dale Garnick. Yes, ma'am. The other one is, one has to speak out and stand up for one's convictions. Inaction at a time of conflagration is inexcusable, by Mahatma Gandhi. It says, I'm here tonight to speak to you about the serious problems of illegal drugs, drug dealing, illegal drug use, and illegal solicitation in our city. These problems are not new, but they, they have been getting worse in recent years. Drug dealing is on the rise, and our streets are becoming more dangerous. Drug use is also on the rise and is having devastating impact on our communities. People are losing their jobs, their families, and their homes because of drug, drug addiction, and illegal solicitation is, is a growing problem. It is making our, our streets, particularly in the area of Park Avenue, at the T market, and the Kemper Street train, train station entranceway, and the park there as well, unsafe for women and children. We need to take, take action to address these problems. We need to increase law enforcement presence in our neighborhoods, and we need, and need to crack down on drug dealers and drug users. Need to also provide more resources for treatment and prevention programs. We need to work together to create a community where everyone feels safe and respected. I know these problems are complex, but I believe that we can solve, solve them if we, if we work together. And I ask you to please take action to make our cities safer and a place for us all. I've just been, as I've been saying, I've seen multiple incidences where, you know, these illegal crimes have been happening, and nothing has been done about it. I'm just asking for some corrective actions to be had. People are hiding behind, you know, the train station entranceways and doing drugs and other things like that. They're down there in the parks of the train station, hiding along the hillside to stay out of the police sight. And I've spoken with the Parks and Rec and the Public Works people, and they say that the police are supposed to get out of their cars and at least patrol that area. I haven't seen that, they'll drive through every now and then, but that's not doing it. Cause there are places like the stairs to the train station where people hide out and do things. And I just feel like something better should be done, please, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. We'll now hear from a group representative regarding the curfew that was put in place and the cameras that need to be put up in the hotspots in Lynchburg, Mr. Robert Flood from Rescues of the Youth. Please restate your name and locality of residence.
Thank you. Think y'all hear me well, can you hear me? I'd like to thank the mayor and the vice mayor and the members of the city council for giving me the opportunity to speak again. I know I had mentioned about, maybe two or three weeks ago, about putting cameras up in hotspots to maybe deter people from doing certain things and at least have an eye in the neighborhood. And I haven't heard no feedback from it. I know they are talking about, or they have done a couple of things by putting cameras at people's houses in hotspots. I don't know if that's part of it, or that's something they join in with what I had mentioned about a couple of Tuesdays ago. The other thing I wanna talk about was curfew. I don't know exactly what, I read the paperwork that the chief put out. But only thing, you know, I was thinking about if a kid or somebody about twenty-one, twenty-two years old, working, walking home late at night, and he looked like he about sixteen or seventeen years old, and get pulled over. Police pull him over and start asking questions, and he resists because he's twenty-one, twenty-two years old, but he looked like he's sixteen, seventeen years old. I don't know what kinda resort would come out of that, but I hope it don't happen, but it's just something I was thinking about. And the third thing that I was thinking about real seriously, you know, we always talk about trying to find a solution to these problems out here that we talk about all the time, but we don't talk about the solutions. Have y'all ever thought about putting a precinct in the neighborhoods that's hot, like they do in big cities? Where the police can get out, go in the neighborhoods, get a chance to meet the young people and the elder people, and they'll feel more comfortable if they knew a precinct was in one of those neighborhoods. I know the attorney general, I think he had allocated about three hundred thousand dollars to fight crime. And it was ceasefire operation, can't think of what day it was, about University of Lynchburg. But he granted money in each city, Charlottesville, Roanoke, Lynchburg, and three hundred some thousand dollars was just to fight crime. And I think some of that money could be used to put a precinct in one of these hotspots so we can get more eyes, and at least, at least get a chance for the officers, get a chance to meet the people in the neighborhoods. Cause they used to walk the beat years ago. In the early, they called Fifth Street and Twelfth Street, with all the people, they had restaurants and stuff, was people look like me. And they had white officers walking up and down the street at nighttime, and they got along with each other. They communicated with each other. But we can talk about it from now to next year, but we know drugs and guns ain't gonna never get out of this town or no other town, cause it's a big business. All we can do is try to slow things down in this town. Because we have never seen it like this, but it's, it was worse than the eighties than it is now, but we don't talk about it. From the seventies to the eighties, from heroin to cocaine, and look at these young people now, ain't got no directions, and the drugs is out there now that's killing kids. Sprinkling stuff on marijuana, cocaine, or whatever, and they are going off, no control. A lot of these young people out there are not doing the same thing that a bunch of them doing. It's just a bunch of them that's doing things that's cowardly, shooting in people's houses, killing kids. And that, hey, have anybody found out exactly what happened, or found out who killed that kid yet? Unsolved murder, one more, in this small town called Lynchburg. But really think and consider putting a precinct in one of these hotspots that ain't Boonsboro, it's war two, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flood. I have some updates for you after the meeting, by the way.
Uh, excuse me?
I have some updates for you after the meeting, okay? You stick around, thank you. We'll now hear from a group representative regarding the troubled youths in Lynchburg, William Richard, from Standing Up for the Youth.
He's not here yet, but.
Oh, okay, thank you. Now hear from a citizen regarding the potential pitfalls and best practices of interactions between youth gatherings and police during curfew time, F J Jalil. Please restate your name and locality.
Thank you, Mr. Jalil, Lynchburg City resident, Ward Three. Now that the citywide curfew is established, I wanted to speak to a part of its implementation. Cities have implemented curfew laws in the past, including Los Angeles, Chicago, Dallas, Baltimore, Jacksonville, New Orleans, and over a hundred more. So let's not reinvent the wheel, nor make the same mistakes they've made. There is something called the void for vagueness theory. Under the void for vagueness theory, a statute is unconstitutional if the wording is so vague that a reasonable person cannot determine what activity is permissible and what is not. Under the overbroad doctrine, statutes are unconstitutional if they criminalize too much innocent conduct, resulting in individuals refraining from constitutionally protected activities. In the same way, or relatedly, I believe that the practice, the practical interactions of individual officers with teenagers during curfew hours must be continually evaluated and improved to be less vague and less arbitrary. Enforcement depends heavily on officer discretion, which leaves room for inconsistent and potentially discriminatory enforcement patterns. According to a study on law enforcement agencies, Bannister, by Bannister, Carter, and Schaefer in two thousand and one, more than forty percent of the contacted agencies did not consistently enforce their local juvenile curfew policies, whether there were inconsistencies due to lack of resources or police discretion that varied. The fairness of a policy should be questioned when there are biases and inconsistencies within its implementation. What if an officer meets a teenager at eleven oh one P M. but lets him off freely because he was heading to his home? What if an officer angers a teenager by detaining him at ten fifty-nine P M. because he's more than a minute away from his home? A fair question would be, is exposure to police associated with adverse health outcomes, health outcomes for youth? These little indiscretions, or these little discrepancies, or arbitrary practices by officers may cause problems with youth, and we wanna avoid that. So findings in a systematic review of twenty-nine studies stated, and including nineteen thousand nine hundred fifty-four participants, stated that police exposure was associated with multiple health outcomes for youth, including adverse mental health risks, behaviors impaired safety. So since police exposure is critical, a critical determinant of youth mental health, let's make it as positive and an interaction as possible, less arbitrary as possible. So please be very detailed in the feedback that you're get, that you give and that you get from the officers as they, I believe they're gonna monthly give you an evaluation of what happens, right? Be very detailed and make sure that those interactions are positive, or lean heavily on positive. And, and, you know, tell them that's what you would like to see every time there's an interaction, no matter if they're, they break it or not. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now hear from a citizen regarding shortages of candidates for the police department, fire department, and school system, Mr. Yuli Holt, please.
I brought my big stick so I could get you all to go along with what I wanna do, how about that? Let me get my notes out here. This is my second appearance before you all, I was here a couple of weeks ago, and first. I was here a couple of weeks ago, and first thing I want to do is, is Honorable Mayor, delighted to be here, Honorable Vice Mayor, council members, city manager, delighted to be here. Before I left home tonight to come here, my wife turned to me and said, why are you doing this? Why, why do you keep trying to get council to change their mind about what they're going to do in the way of funding for the school system? And I said, because we have four wonderful high school students, a pair of triplets or triplets and another junior who live next door to us. And I want to be sure the students of Lynchburg get a quality education. What I'm concerned about is this. Last year about this time, there were three city departments that were having a difficult time recruiting employees and retaining employees. That was the police department, fire department, and the city schools. Interesting enough, you all have decided to give the police department a lot more money, the fire department a lot more money, and to give the city schools 1.4 million dollars less than they got the year before. I sent you all, all emails last night with information about what other localities spend in the way of, for student education. And if you looked at those numbers, you came to the conclusion that the counties normally get between 10 and 11,000 dollars to educate their students. The city's between 12 and 17. And in that list, Charlottesville gives, the Charlottesville students have 18,000 dollars to be educated with. Nelson County is 15,000. Roanoke is comparable to us, and Danville is comparable to us. What I don't understand is, is why you all decided to cut 1.4 million dollars out of the city school system's budget. In analyzing the numbers, the conclusion I came to was that that's not an arbitrary number. Somebody took what we, what our students get now, applied another number to it, subtracted it, and then multiplied the number of students that we have in our school system to come up with the 1.4 million dollars. And I'm telling you, I think this is the wrong path. Our, our students, you know, we're not, Lynchburg is not spending a lot more money than any other localities. Lynchburg is right in the middle with the other cities of our size, and I think for you all to cut out 1.4 million dollars from the city school budget is wrong. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next section is general business. This section includes general items of new business. Item number 12, consideration of approving candidates to interview for school board appointments for terms beginning July 1st, 2023 and expiring June 30th of 2025. Staff will provide a brief summary of the requests. Ms. Alicia Finney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At your May 23rd city council meeting, council took your list of candidates and did an initial round of who you'd like to interview. That gave us 17 candidates to interview. Since that time, we realized that one member was ineligible to serve due to his employment, and so now we're at 16. And this period is for you all to decide whether there's any more on this list that you'd like to consider for interviewing.
I think the only addition I had was Christian DePaul, who I know I think we have to confirm on the, on the 20th.
That is correct.
Yes.
That's correct.
That would be for District 1, yes.
Yeah, correct.
Thank you. What, what were you saying, council missions?
I don't think we can add him in delay for the public hearing.
Right, I'm just, that's correct. Letting her know ahead of time. Anyone else want to add anybody else that wasn't on the list? I think that would be the names that are in black that we can still add. Dr. Wilder? No. Councilman Dolan, no. Councilman Holgason, no. No. I'm sorry, probably, no. Okay, I think that's it.
Thank you. And just to be clear for the audience and for anybody watching at home, these will be conducted on the 20th and 21st of June. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on. Consideration of introducing a resolution amending Lynchburg City Schools' major classification funding for fiscal year 2024. This item was presented to council during our business item briefings earlier this afternoon. May I have a motion?
Before the motion, I can make it this way.
Okay.
Just to disclose that I'm a member of spouses of Lynchburg City School employees. My wife is a teacher in Lynchburg City Schools, and that I'm able to vote on this impartially and without bias.
Okay, thank you.
So moved?
Okay, all right. Any discussion?
Speaking to the motion, we did go over it this afternoon. Everything looks good to me. It seems like the allocation by category process is working. There needs to be an amendment to the LCS budget. They come back and we tweak it and we move forward accordingly. I'm pleased to see that this is, continues to be the largest investment in the classroom, in the, in teaching category, in instruction that the city's ever seen. And that kindly ask our good neighbor to revisit the numbers on a holistic approach as, as to how many dollars the Lynchburg City School System is slated to get in this fiscal year 2024 budget. Needless to say, this looks good to me, and I so move.
Okay. Dr. Wilder?
In reference to this motion, I approved of it because again, just a certain reclassification of the numbers. I didn't approve the whole total method because I did request more funding for our school system, and I think they deserve more funding for our children, right, the community. But I'll go ahead and support this motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Councilman Holgason?
Well, because Skipper brought his stick today. He asked for 1.4 million more going to the classroom. Well, guess what? This is 1,334,000 more to the classroom, going from instruction to the classroom. And so per the request from the city school division and the school board, I imagine this was presented by one of their deputies, but was this duly, I didn't even ask, was it duly approved by the school board? Normally, the school board chairman is the one who presents, as opposed to their, the school administration.
If, if, in your packet, there's a letter from Dr. Edwards to me kind of outlining this request that it was timing for her as to why Dr. Wodkow was here as opposed to Dr. Edwards. But if you look there in the, in their packet, there is a letter from Dr. Edwards to me requesting this.
So I'm not, I'm not referring to the deputy versus the superintendent. I'm referring to the governing body, the school board.
There was that support, yes.
So the school board actually voted on that?
If you saw that, I think, I can't remember Reed's exact bullet, but that one, first bullet was that it was presented to council or to the school board as of certain date. And because of this new, new formula, that now has to come to us. And so, yes, it has.
And so they actually voted to ask for this change. I couldn't see it in the thing.
Yeah, they did.
They did on Tuesday. Good, thank you.
Council, I mean, council missions?
Yeah, so I was just like the vice mayor, really pleased to see kind of the dialogue going back and forth with the deputy superintendent coming in today, and they provided some great information for us justifying the request. I think it was a good request. And just to kind of put something out there, I pulled up the budget that was adopted last year for the operating fund for Lynchburg City Schools, and it was 105.9 million. And I'm looking at the resolution of what we're appropriating right now, and it's 109.3 million for the operating fund. So, you know, and with the majority of it going to instruction, 70, almost 76 million dollars to instruction. In the last audit, we spent about 68 million. The last year that we actually know what we spent was 68 million dollars in the instruction category. That's the money that actually takes care of the teachers and the school-based employees and the classrooms in the last audit. And now we're looking at 76 million for next year. I think this is a great thing, and I'm really excited to support it.
Great. Oh, Councilman Dolan?
Okay, so I do not support the categorized funding, but I will support the reclassification. I really want to make it clear that this is not new money we are allocating to this school. This is money that they, we have already allocated, and they are, they are reclassifying. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, we're reclassifying.
Well, I mean, they're asking.
They're asking for it to be reclassified. Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
The match is now.
Great. Okay, now we're moving on to item 14, consideration of adopting Resolution R. 2350, adopting the fiscal year 2428 capital improvement program and appropriating the fiscal year 24 capital budget. Staff provided a presentation on this item earlier this afternoon, so I just wanted to briefly kind of recap. So those of you who've been following the whole budget process, obviously you've been watching this since March. And, you know, something that I've said several times is, you know, honesty and integrity is very important to me. And when I came on council, you know, I believed that we were team Lynchburg up here, not five, not two, not three, seven, working together to do the best that we can all do for our city. So in the process of working on our budget, obviously there were some hiccups along the way that I've expressed. We worked through the budget process, got really close to passing it. And as you know, three weeks ago, we were right there, and then we got to the vote for the CIP. And the previous vote had been six to one with our vice mayor voting against it and everybody else voting for it. And then three weeks ago, our last meeting, it flipped, and then it was a four to three against it. So there was a lot of confusion at that meeting that I expressed my disappointment because there had been lack of communication. And what I was later told by a fellow council member was that the morning of that meeting, a phone call was made to council members, not including myself, not including council member Dolan or Wilder, obviously not Vice Mayor Feraldi because he'd already made up his mind to vote against it, to change the vote of that night. And so again, lack of communication, lack of intent. Emails have gone back and forth between that time and now, with our city manager included, discussing the concerns of what were part of the CIP and what people did and did not want. We had a lengthy discussion at our four o'clock meeting about what could and could not be pushed off and what should we keep in. I think what we discussed was this is the 2024 budget, so really our focus should be on what's being spent in the 2024 budget year. Everything else is placeholder for the rest of the CIP, which is really just for, to get grants and so forth from the state and federal perspective. And so we have the option tonight to, option A would be to vote on the CIP as is, as I think was expected from several of us, to just go forward and, and close this chapter of the 2024 budget and move on. Ms. Witt presented earlier what was included in specifically the 2024 budget, a lot of which still has some moving parts. Not everything is even solidified. Some of the, some of that is still in the planning phase. I think Councilman Till and I talked about some of the specific projects that we were concerned about, and those things can actually still be discussed. There were certain things that I know we talked about that were concerned as far as costs that Council missions mentioned, and I think we will be looking at that in the procurement process for bids that hopefully will maybe potentially bring costs down. There's a risk of pushing some projects off because as we know, we don't, aren't guaranteed that costs will go down. That's a risk that we would take if we push things off also. And there was some debate about some of the current projects that we have going on in the city as far as if they're essential now, essential later, including some improvements downtown that we're doing that have been done around the city. And beautification or not, there's certain projects that are, would be halted that are currently in place. Others that are safety issues regarding lights and intersections that I think are important. And I think we were hearing some concerns about investments downtown and the concern about taxpayer dollars. But at the end of the day, we have to make investments in our city for multiple reasons. A, we want it to be safe. We want our sidewalks to be safe. We do want things to be attractive because we want people to come here. We want businesses to come here. We do want things to look nice, but we also do want to make sure that we're being good stewards with taxpayer money. So we heard all of those discussions earlier. So option A is to keep the CIP as it was originally presented in the proposed budget. Option B, I'm speaking, would be to obviously continue the discussion we had earlier, which is to eliminate certain projects either in the fiscal year 24 or to eliminate things out of 24 which really don't even have dollars assigned to them. So I believe that earlier Councilman Taylor had mentioned wanting to just kind of get things over with and move on. So I would like to give him the opportunity to speak first before we move on to see where he is on things.
I'm going to be pleased to pass the 24 budget. We need, we need to get this done. We're, we're wearing ourselves out and everybody else out. We don't need to do that. We need to keep the city moving forward, and I move that we pass the 24 budget.
Option A?
Option A.
Option A.
I second it.
We get this done.
Do we have any word of discussion on that?
Any discussion?
Okay, council missions?
So you mentioned communication and full disclosure, I've not received one phone call from the mayor since January 1st. So the, the lack of communication isn't coming from all of us up here. Just want to make that clear. But at the end of the day, we're sitting on an opportunity right now to really scale back on some of the spending in FY24, which is why I'm not going to be approving this mo, or supporting this motion. It's just too much. We're spending too much money. These projects are, some of them are insanely expensive, and they aren't focused in the right areas. So I won't be supporting this motion.
Okay. Councilman Holgason?
Thank you. And I'd like to make a substitute motion. We have option A and actually option B. I think we can do this and vote on it tonight. All the items would stay the same in the second portion of the resolution, with the exception of the July 1st, 2023 and ending July 30th, 2024. Currently, it has listed at 38,735,000. I propose that the only number that we change, keep the capital, the airport, the schools' capital, the sewer fund, the water fund, the stormwater, all those numbers the same. Just change that first number to 28,066,784. What that does is remove the items that were our city financial officer, our chief financial officer, Donna Witt, had proposed and shown clearly that there's three and a half million dollars of projects that are necessary but can be deferred. Secondly, we have a fairly simple traffic light that, and we can change these budgets throughout the year. So we don't have to say, okay, we're not going to do the traffic light, and this traffic light breaks next week? Well, we amend the budget and actually fix the traffic light. So, but going forward, there's lots of things that should be removed, but I think this would be a compromise at the 28 million. Secondly, or third, the third item, we had another 6 million dollars on beautification streetscapes on downtown. Costs 3 million bucks to pull out the water lines, dig the holes, change the water, make good water, and double the amount to fill it with dirt and fix the sidewalk? No. The, the difficulty is digging. The difficulty is changing the water lines. That's the thing that's the beneficial impact for our citizens. Cutting that amount from a 6 million dollars over the next five years, it's projected to be another 56 million dollars. Let's begin to say, okay, enough. Let's move forward with that and putting 2 million dollars in there. That gets us to the 28,066,784. That adopts the budget tonight. It actually moves everything forward. It keeps all the other numbers the same. It takes full advantage of what our city, our chief financial officer and what we had this whole afternoon meeting about in the last three weeks of discussion and looking at the actual capital improvement plan. There's still lots of things that could be in there, and we could actually keep on going for another month on trying to lower these things. But I think this is a good compromise to say 28,066,784 on the, the amount for the general fund instead of the 38 million for the city capital projects fund, and I'll make that as a substitute motion.
I'll second that.
Just one last thing. I hope that we can go forward with this. It'll close the chapter on this budget tonight. This will be items that we've talked about, thankfully, as each project comes forward. I think the city staff is fully engaged, that council is engaged, that we're looking at projects. We really, when we say we want to be the, we care about our taxpayer resources, we mean it. It's not like the olden days where people would say that as a slogan. These are actually mean it. And so hopefully you can rein in the belt. Hopefully this will pass 7-0. And with that, if in the future, there are some problems, we have this money that's sitting in reserve. We have this money that's still sitting We have this money that's still sitting in cash that we can, can utilize. We did the bond anticipation notes. We're now earning interest on this money. And let's not replace things that don't need to be replaced until they need to do it, just like every individual family and business in Lynchburg does. So I hope this passes unanimously. I think it's a, it took our, our time this afternoon judiciously, and thank you.
I want to thank our CFO, Donna Witt, for coming up with this presentation today. A lot of really good information in here, a lot of, a lot of good information to really digest and consume. And I can't agree more. There's, there's stuff that we can just hold off on, defer, you know, a year and revisit it throughout the next year and see what we need to do and bring back. But the reality is, we're getting paid to wait. We're getting paid to wait to spend the money because the interest rates are so high. So if, if we're sitting on cash that we're not spending, we're earning more interest income off of it. And then on top of that, the prices for construction in some of these projects right now are at historic highs. The market is cooling down. As the market cools down, and if we head into a recession, the costs are going to come down. I just don't think it is fiscally responsible or prudent to spend money on these projects right now. One of the things that we also discussed earlier is, is the, the, the school item with the, I think it was seventy-three million. Is that right, Ms. Witt? Something for the school projects that were in there that are, we don't have any plans for those?
It's just a placeholder.
It's just a placeholder? We, we have a placeholder of seventy-three million dollars with no plan to spend it? We don't, we don't need to look at the citizens' money like that. If we have no plan to spend the money, why are we voting on holding that money and earmarking that money for capital projects that we have no plan to spend? So I'm in support of the substitute motion. I'm, I'm hoping that we'll be able to pass it and honor our taxpayers and our citizens.
Dr. Wilder?
Yes, I do not support the motion. I support the original motion that we made. Again, we've worked on this budget since like February. We had talked about capital projects at the beginning of the month. They presented it to the, to the, to the council members. We had open forum about it, budget hearing about that. I mean, it, comments should have been done by then, then at the last hour, we changed it. You know, I think we need to go ahead and pass the, pass this budget with the, with the, with the hard work that the staff already put in. You know, if you look at the city over the past twenty years, we've made substantial investments in downtown. You can see the benefits of investments. Twenty-plus, if you're from Lynchburg, twenty-plus years ago, you did not want to come downtown. Now they have beautiful spa, you can get your pedicures done, various other great businesses, great restaurants. They have the academy, they have Virginia, and so many people up here. Some of them voted no to everything, to everything, to all the improvements, to all the investments, they voted no. And we've seen the benefits. You see the nightlife. You see the wonderful fairs they have on our, on our town square at the riverfront. So the, the investments have paid off. We have seen all the loss, million-dollar loss in Lynchburg. Who would have thought? We have seen the investments pay off. So I'm thankful for the investment that has been made. And I'm with the city, with the powerful team, Ms. Donna Witt, twenty-three plus years in, in accounting and CPA and working in our city and making a strong investment and looking at the dollars and looking at the funding and make sure we, we are strong with the, whatever our rating, a strong grading that we have, making sure we stay and comply for that with a successful audit report. So again, I support the, the original motion. I do not support this substitute motion. Thank you.
All right, well, let's go ahead and vote on the substitute motion that Councilman Hegelson motion on.
The motion fails two, five.
Okay, so we'll go back to the original motion that Councilman Taylor motion, which would to, to vote the CIP as originally proposed. Go ahead and remember that, please.
Motion passes four, three.
All right, thank you very much. The meeting is now adjourned. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be held on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three at four P M. Thank you very much.